Hi, so I was approached by a constituent about the fact that the majority of pets that are bred in close quarters and bred, you know, many, many times, it all happens in the Midwest. So I have a map here, and if you see these dark spots, this is all near Wisconsin. So Wisconsin is not necessarily the originator of these pets, but all of these animals that are bred in really nasty conditions apparently come from nearby. So it's an organization called Bailing Out Benji, and so I was asked if we could put together an ordinance, and I said, "Well, sounds good. We don't really have any pet stores in Whitewater, but there's nothing wrong with looking at, making sure that this, you know, these animals are not sold in Whitewater." So I have a very large number of people who are okay with this. The 95% of the businesses in Whitewater that deal with pets, such as me and my pets, Albert's Dog Lounge, Community Cat, Touched By a Paw, Humane Society of Jefferson County, they all support this ordinance. And essentially it just means that we won't let businesses sell dogs, pets, birds, pets that have been bred over and over and over again. And part of this problem is Campylobacter, right? So, you know, we're in the middle of COVID right now, which is an animal-borne disease. These dogs, cats, pets, spread disease, Campylobacter, which is multi-drug resistant, but it's also one of those things that some people actually go into debt. They go to a large pet store, they want to buy a dog or a cat, and they go into major debt trying to buy this animal. And so Wisconsin is the biggest buyer of these animals. And there are a number of people on the call today who would like to discuss and talk about how they would like to have some of these ordinances placed. Essentially, Wisconsin doesn't have any ordinances at all in any of the cities, and they would like to start seeing some of these ordinances put in place so that we don't buy dogs, cats, that make us sick, that are not well-bred, that have to get sick and put people into debt.
Before we proceed then, Brianna, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to, yeah, to pass this ordinance. Our attorney put this ordinance together, the Humane Society of Jefferson County and Wisconsin has approved it. There are a number of people in town who deal with pets who also are, have their signatures on, on record that they approve it as well, and they feel like it's an idea.
Is there a second?
Alan, Alan, here, I'll second, but I have a question. Brianna, I'm all for this, but what about other animals? What about bats and snakes and what about all animals?
Sure, it's an ordinance about selling animals. So that's, it's very specific. Pet stores selling animals, selling pets to people.
This is Wally, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. I think it is, Brianna, I think the way it's drafted, it is cats and dogs. It could be expanded to other animals. I know that rabbits are one of the ones that tend to show up in some of these in other states as prohibited from selling as well, but it could be expanded, and I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure this one focuses on cats and dogs.
I am sure that you're right, Wally, that's the way that I read it. Are there other questions?
I would move to vote on it with the kind of agenda that we expand it to include all, all animals and all pets that could be sold instead of just specifically cats and dogs.
Are you taking a motion to amend that then?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second on that amendment?
Alan, I would second that.
I guess the question, well, let me ask for a discussion on the amendment first. To me, that would be broader than any ordinance that I saw, and I looked at a bunch of ordinances around the country and didn't run into any that were as broad as to prohibit any animals from being sold. In, for example, goldfish. I don't know that there's really a particular problem with goldfish or certain reptiles, maybe. What I found looking elsewhere typically was a prohibition on rabbits under the age of two months old, and also sometimes chicks under two months of old. And if we went with that, then Winchester True Value would be considered a pet store that could not sell those chicks. I'm not aware that there have been any problems with those chicks, and in fact, to me, it would be kind of not to allow that when we have a backyard chick in the origin.
I feel like this is one of the first ordinances that's happened in this particular area of Wisconsin, and cats and dogs is where the real problem is. So I would, I think we should, if we need to amend it later, that's fine, but we don't actually have a large pet store here that is putting people into debt and selling diseased animals right now. So it seems like cats and dogs is a pretty good, basic ordinance to put in place right now.
Should we include rabbits in the amendment? That is to be made, and I appreciate the perspective of what it looks like from what somebody posted in the chat, that we have, you know, quite a few individuals in here who specialize in this. If we could get some of that expert input too, I'd appreciate that. But if it would be a good baseline, that's cats, rabbits on there then, it would be agreeable to everybody to kind of protect the most vulnerable groups of pets.
All right, why don't we hold off on voting on the amendment until we have opportunity for more comment? Before we proceed to public comment, any other initial questions or comments from council members?
Lynn, I have a question. Sure. Yeah, it's not about the amendment. You know, in terms of, you know, what you were highlighting, were you thinking more about exotic animals, Matt? Is that what you were intending? You know, I don't know if you're talking about snakes or if anybody's...
I was just trying to do something that would, I mean, you know, obviously not like tigers, I'm not worried about that, you know, trade in Whitewater, but just because I know people have a wide variety of pets, and people at Whitewater do have snakes and those types of pets actually, so something that would be able to have as many protected as possible. But again, I don't want to, you know, risk having too much in there as to where we'd have to make, it would be very senseless.
First of all, I think we need to be very delicate.
What did you say, McKinley?
Was that Patrick or McKinley? We missed something.
No, it was McKinley. Yeah, it was McKinley. His video's pretty laggy.
We did hear you now, we didn't hear you pre, I didn't hear you pre this one.
I didn't know if you guys had heard me before. So I think we need to be very delicate with the language. Yeah, I have bad kind of connection. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I think we overhear you and ask if we could hear you.
Great.
Would you be able to call in with your phone, the candy that might provide a clear connection or voice?
Oh, okay. My idea is that we need to be very delicate with the language of ordinance. I think the idea that farms not having those is very, make sure that, oh, great, I can try. I'll look for later.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead to public comment if we could, if you could unmute anybody who you have muted, please, Steve?
Hello?
We have nobody muted centrally.
All right.
All right, I see Peggy Race wishing to speak.
Yes, all right. Good evening. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening, my name is Peggy Race, and I live at 280 North Esterly Avenue. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening regarding the humane pet store ordinance. So based on my own personal experiences, which I will share in a moment, I believe this ordinance reflects a compassionate move that promotes animal welfare, supports our humane business model, and protects the health and economic well-being of our community. So in 2017, I adopted a dog that was surrendered from a puppy mill. On the day of Deputy's arrival into rescue, thick mats of fur covered his hind legs, his coat hung like a dirty mop. Emotionally, he appeared shut down and fearful of the human touch. For me, Deputy's image from that day is a real reminder of the minimal standards of care inherent to the commercial dog breeding industry. Under the Animal Welfare Act governed by the USDA, dogs are legally allowed to spend their entire lives confined in cages, providing no more than six inches of space on all sides of their body. The absence of grooming and socialization requirements under the Animal Welfare Act were clearly visible on the day I met Deputy. These conditions are ideal breeding grounds for health and behavioral issues that are passed on to the consumer when they purchase from the pet store. And in this community where neighbors help neighbors, these minimal standards of care do not fit with the model of our city. Furthermore, the consumer seldom sees beyond the cute little puppy in the pet store window. Last year, while visiting a pet store, I gathered information about a lethargic-looking puppy that was for sale in the pet store window. The store clerk happily provided the name of the breeder, the kennel, and the city and state of where the puppy was born. The clerk assured me she had personally visited the facility, and it was beautiful. And I'm sure the store clerk, along with each one of us, would want to believe that a $3,200 puppy was raised in conditions that were fit for a king. What the clerk didn't know is that I have traveled the back roads of the Midwest, driven past various puppy mills, and snapped my own photos. And ironically, I knew the parents of that pet store puppy were living in anything but stellar conditions. Because truth be told, I doubt a dilapidated barn with chicken coop-style wire cages is an image the consumer would choose to support. And unfortunately, this is just one example of the deceptive practices that fit with the puppy-selling pet store business model. And to me, this is not what the city of Whitewater is about. So this ordinance, putting Whitewater squarely on the side of protecting the consumer, legitimate businesses, and helpless animals, is clearly the right thing to do, and I urge the city of Whitewater to be part of the change and pass the humane pet store ordinance. And I'd like to thank you for taking the time to listen to my story as you consider this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there others wishing to speak? I can't see everyone's photos, so you may just need to hop in.
Lynn, if you look at the chat, Lynn, if you look at the chat, there's a list of people listed in there that Peggy put, if you want to maybe call them out.
Well, if I could find the chat. All right. Lisa Dossis, oh, wait, oh, golly, there's quite a list there, isn't there? Thank you. Andy Lewis, the founder of Albert's Dog Lounge, next.
Hi there. My name is Andy Lewis, and can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm the founder of Albert's Dog Lounge. We're actually located just outside of Whitewater, right by the lake, and we focus on rescuing and rehoming seniors and special needs dogs. And when I was originally approached about this, I was not sure how I could relate to this. I do pull from shelters, but I don't have a lot of immediate contact with breeders. And then suddenly last week, I was contacted about a dog that needed to be rehomed, and at seven months old, this dog has already, already needs two full knee replacements. This dog was purchased from a breeder here in Wisconsin called Red Hot Labradors, and was over $1,000 purebred black lab. And within, like I said, within seven months, this dog's knees are both blown out, the dog can hardly walk. The owners went to the breeder, and the breeder said, "Oh, sorry, all I can do is give you a new puppy." Turns out, less than a few days after I agreed to help this dog, which is going to cost me in excess of $5,000 to help this dog be able to walk again, the breeder showed up on the Humane Society's horrible 100 breeders in the United States. This breeder was shut down by the state of Wisconsin for having a room full of labs in airline crates that couldn't move, had feces in their kennels, no access to food and water, and were just essentially used as breeding machines. Further, I was subsequently contacted by another group, and I have now taken in another dog who is both deaf and blind from another breeder out of Wisconsin at seven months old. So over the course of the past week, I have taken in two essentially breeder reject dogs that have been bred and are licensed with the state of Wisconsin, or were at one point, and are registered as AKC breeders. So I think it's really important that we, as a community, are able to show that we stand by responsible breeding. There is such a thing as responsible breeding, but typically, these pet stores are taking dogs from puppy mills, from essentially just somebody who is using these dogs to breed them out for the money and nothing more. They don't support their dogs. When something happens to their dogs, groups like myself end up taking these dogs in and trying to better their lives. Both breeders were contacted about their dogs, and neither one of them wanted their dogs back and said, "They're your problem now." As a rescue, if I ever was contacted about any of my dogs not being able to stay in their homes, the first thing I would do is take these dogs back. So it's a lot of irresponsible breeding going on, and I think we can make a statement, both locally, regionally, and statewide, and I really stand by and support this ordinance.
Thank you. Particularly since I know we do have a number of people wishing to speak, we'll ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes, if you please. Next up would be Kristen Schubert, Bailing Out Benji, please.
Lynn, we also have some staff, we also have our police chief wishing to ask a question. We can do that following these comments, I just want to let you know.
Yes, I noted that, thank you.
Okay.
Kristen Schubert, are you available?
I think she might have accidentally dropped off, I don't, she was just here.
Okay, then, for the moment, let's move on to Tammy Newmeister, the resident executive director of the cat rescue.
Hi, good evening. I'm Tammy Newmeister, I'm a parent in Whitewater, and I am the executive director and president of the cat rescue here in Whitewater. I have two main points that I want to make about this ordinance. The first is about kitten mills, because kitten mills do exist, and they are just nasty and horrible at the puppy mills, mostly with pure breeds. And people are making huge amounts of money on these animals that are forced to live in small cages, have no socialization, have tons of medical issues, a lot of the pure breeds have long hair and are terribly mad and in pain, and they're taken away from them at a young age and owe a lot of money. It truly is a thing, people don't, they hear all the time, but they don't hear about the kitten mills, they also exist. The second is the personal story about some of these orders. We had a foster kitten named Pika who had cerebral hypoplasia, which is a neurological problem that causes wobbling problems, she had problems eating, problems thinking, and having little blocks. And my foster daughter was in a terrible car accident and in a coma. Her mom came up from Florida and didn't know what she was doing with all the animals, and we surrendered all of them to Anamart Madison, which is one of these pet stores who sell animals. Soon as she came out of her coma, she called me, called Anamart, it took three calls to what they call adoption counselors, who are truly just salespeople, even find somebody who knew about this kitten. Finally come to find out that she lived in a small kennel in a storeroom, and nobody even knew it existed. So that cat was going nowhere, she was never going to be adopted or sold, because they didn't know who was there, who was left imperfect. So when I finally went there to get her from them, even though she was microchipped to us, we had never scanned her, didn't share that she was our cat, didn't know how she got there, and I had to pay to get her out of there, which I just felt was horrific on their part, because they truly had no intention of even selling this cat, I don't know what they were going to do with her. The other story that I have is from Pet World in Milwaukee. I was there a few weeks back, and they were selling kittens for $299.99. Laying all kittens, they're right anything, just kittens, not spayed or neutered, not vaccinated, they were asking $300. I just checked their website today, and it's now $379.99. And when we were there, my friend's daughter asked them what happened to the kittens that they didn't get adopted, and the store clerk's answer was that the snakes needed to eat. And when I approached the manager about that, he insisted that the guy was kidding, he truly don't think anyone, these are for-profit places that care nothing about the animals and only wants the money. So I urge you to accept those terms, and let's make Whitewater, the first city in Wisconsin, to not allow cat and dogs to be sold in our city in that instance. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Nicholson, next, please.
Hi, I'm going to read my statement slightly, just so I stay on track, because I know we have a limited time here, and I want to respect that, so bear with me. So council members, I want to thank all of you for taking up this really important issue. I'm Megan Nicholson, I'm the Wisconsin State Director for the Humane Society of the United States, and I currently reside in Madison, Wisconsin. I'm joining today in support of this ordinance. The HSUS, you may or may not know, is the nation's largest animal protective animal protection organization. Puppy mills and their connection to puppy-selling pet stores is an issue that we are adamant on ending. This ordinance that you're reviewing today, it is part of an effort to end the pipeline of puppies flowing from the mills to the pet stores. It's also a direct response to consumer heartbreak. Many people that have bought these puppies end up with a puppy that's really sick or eventually dies. Passing a humane pet store ordinance generates awareness about puppy mills and their link to pet stores. It encourages adoption of homeless animals, and if the consumer is set to busy breed, this ordinance does not limit them. In doing that, we'll encourage them to research their options and take that time. Pet stores, heard in Peggy's story, and I have experience with myself with Petland, they really put our emotions, they will try every which way, including offering insane financing with balloon payments and high interest rates on top of a $3,000 to $5,000 cost of the dog, to have that consumer leave that store with that puppy in hand. We received at the HSUS, I'm concerned, complaints from consumers, including those in Wisconsin, who have sent thousands of dollars in vet care for these sick puppies. One companion in Wisconsin reported that she spent over $10,000 caring for her pet store puppy. You can see this from Andy's story, a double knee replacement at seven months old. These puppies are sick, they are crammed, first are born in deplorable conditions, they're taken from their mothers very early, they're crammed into trucks with other sick and vulnerable puppies, and then they're just shipped far away, or locally, where they're treated like nothing more than a product or a commodity. The order is a pet-loving community, and I know this simply by looking at the coalition letter that I sent over. Maybe two G's put together, which was something, I've been in this job for a bit, and it was incredible to see the reaction and the support right away. You've got support of local businesses, local nonprofits, your county humane society, national groups, and people who are spearheading this are local citizens. So as Americans learn more about our puppy mill issue, a lot of potential lawmakers are taking notice. There's over 350 of these local ordinances that have been passed through grassroots efforts of citizens that want to do something right in their community. This ordinance will protect your community from stores with inhumane models from moving in. It will also celebrate your humane businesses that are already operating in your community and your community values. So I urge you to set a precedent and pass a humane pet store ordinance to better your community for the citizens and animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Okazaki is next.
Yeah, thanks very much. And really, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to be brief, I think we've got a lot of really good points. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. So I'm Jeff Okazaki, I'm the executive director of the Humane Society of Jefferson County and a certified humane officer for the state of Wisconsin. And, you know, I just really want to say, from the perspective of the Humane Society, we're certainly very proud to have municipality that's part of our county act as a leader on the protection of pets and pet owners in our community, you know, and we really, we see all the time the impact, you know, both on the pets, in terms of poor care and genetic abnormalities and no veterinary service and really just some mean conditions. And also the impact on families. And, you know, just last winter, we had a staff member taking a puppy mill-bred dog that had been purchased for over $2,000 and surrendered to our shelter in less than two months. And just for comparison, we adopt our dogs out for $200, and that comes with a full veterinary workup, spay and neuter, and all vaccinations, which generally are not given for any puppy mill animals. And so really, this measure is introduced helps ensure families are not left holding the bill as re-properly bred animals, that the animals themselves are really a lot less likely to face these deplorable conditions. And we also really want to make sure that we're recognizing kind of the exemplary way that Whitewater really has introduced and approached this ordinance. You know, it's wonderful to see the collaboration on all levels from the folks who are here today and the talking, and I heard that unfortunately, me and my pets was not able to make it tonight, but they certainly were involved, and so having, you know, the businesses that potentially would be affected onboard and involved in the process and the way that this ordinance was created, really to make sure that it doesn't particularly impact businesses in Whitewater is very much the right approach. And so, you know, certainly from our perspective, and I think the perspective really of everyone connected with our organizations, would just be a fantastic way to be a leader for our community and for our state in making sure that this is taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Jill Friermuth, next, please.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jill Friermuth. I am a local resident and proud business owner in Whitewater for 30-plus years. I am also an active volunteer for the Humane Society of Jefferson County and a member of the Janesville Beloit Kennel Club. You can easily say that I'm a dog lover. Many good points have already been brought up about why we should support this ordinance, but I will try to add a few more. We enjoy being in Whitewater because of the close-knit, supportive, and engaged residents we have here. Being a small business owner in the city, we have ordinances that we must adhere to. To me, the ordinances set by the city are enforceable guidelines for having a respected and successful business here, and I understand why we have to have these in place. With this being said, I support the ordinance prohibiting pet stores from selling dogs and cats here in the city of Whitewater. I believe we should be engaged with the common knowledge that most, if not all, pet stores selling dogs and cats, they come from a mill of some kind. Oversight of breeders from the federal and state government is lacking, so we need to get this right and have a common sense of regulation, I'm sorry, and have... get this right and have a common sense of regulation, I'm sorry, and have common sense regulation in place if the situation arises in Whitewater. Another concern as a business owner in the, is the economic impact if a pet store came to town and did not follow said ordinances and had to be shut down. The manpower involved from the police department doing investigations and documentation on all the animals in the store is costly to a Whitewater resident, not to mention manpower in veterinary care and animal relocation efforts. As a shelter volunteer and a kennel club member, I support this ordinance not to sell puppies and kittens, because it preys upon the impulse buyer. In other words, the person hasn't thought this commitment through. The pet store is interested only in the money and to rapidly fill the cage with another dog or cat for sale. As a Whitewater resident, I think we should set the bar higher than that. When it, when consumers work with an accredited professional breeder, rescue, or humane society, they go through proper vetting processes to make sure that this animal is an appropriate for your lifestyle. In addition, a professional breeder, rescue, or shelter does not back, does a background check with your veterinarian and landlord to make sure you are a good pet owner or can even have a pet at your residence. These measures are standard to ensure a happy outcome for the consumer and the animal. As a shelter volunteer, I have seen dogs dumped for many reasons, but the status I have seen is when a puppy mill breeder wants to euthanize or surrender older dogs because they can no longer produce puppies after a long miserable life in a cage, this is their ending. These practices just go against the grain of human decency. As a Whitewater resident, I see no reason why we would not support such a common sense and humane ordinance to protect some of the most vulnerable animals that many of us call our best friends. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Chief Erin Rapp, Chief of Police.
All right, I'd like to clear my microphone first, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, all right, great. Um, first of all, thank you Jill for your comments. Um, I have a couple of quick points and a quick question probably for the city attorney. First of all, everybody probably on this, uh, call and video conference and common council meeting know that the police, our role is to enforce laws and ordinances. Thankfully, there are no known outlets in our city at this point for these types of sales. Um, having said that, um, I guess my question for Wally is, is the enforcement angle, and I know that Jill brought that up, uh, a, a second ago, so I know Wally, you probably have done the research and would let us know that if one were to pop up in Whitewater, or if one were to apply for, I, I don't know what you would say, um, business in Whitewater, um, I'm assuming it would be the police department that, that would take that enforcement action, so we, we would need some guidance on that and how to enforce it. And then also, since I earlier heard that there is no such ordinance across our state, I suspect that if this passes, it will no doubt make news, and perhaps it will gain traction, and quite frankly, should not weigh in with opinions, but I'm happy if that happens. That's all I have to ask and say.
Thanks Erin.
Thank you. This is Wally, kinda responding to Erin's question. It would be enforced, much like other ordinances are enforced, I think it would take a little bit of a learning curve, but oftentimes, it would be, uh, a matter of the police finding out about it, and it, it wouldn't necessarily just be the police who would have the power to enforce it, but I think that would be the main body that would enforce it in Whitewater. But whether it be by complaint or somehow being mo- notified, and then the, it would simply be like any other police investigation, subject to your policies and decisions, and if you, uh, if your officers went in and saw what they thought was a violation, they could write a citation, or in some of these unusual ordinances, the police department will ask our opinion as to whether or not we think, meaning the city attorney's office, whether or not we think it's a violation, and whether or not we recommend that there be a citation issued, and then ultimately, it would, uh, either, it would go to courts, and there would be an opportunity for the person to plead not guilty, and, and move through the court system. So I, I think ultimately, it would be pretty easy to enforce, and, and I know that there's, I think there's even some states that may have adopted statewide regulations along these lines, and so there's, I think, the opportunity to look at potential other cases as to the enforceability, and I've done some research on it, and I haven't seen any problems with the enforceability based on the research I've done so far.
Great, thank you, Wally.
Um, finally, Kristen Schubert, Kristen, I don't know if you were on when we asked to limit comments to three minutes, go ahead, please.
Sorry, my laptop died when, when it was my turn, and so now I'm on a, a PC with power here, so. Good evening, uh, my name is Kristen Schubert, I'm one of the Wisconsin team leads for Bailing Out Benji. Uh, Bailing Out Benji is a nonprofit dedicated to education and raising awareness of puppy mills and their connection to pet stores. We do this by collecting thousands of certificates of veterinary inspections, which are also called CVIs. We have painted records directly from the Wisconsin Department of Agriculture. Since commercially bred puppies are regulated, they cannot be transported across Wisconsin state lines without a CVI. The CVI provides documentation on where the puppies are coming from and where they are going. Our research shows that Wisconsin pet stores are obtaining puppies from eight different states besides Wisconsin, two of which are home to some of the worst puppy mills in the nation, Missouri and Iowa. As you may know, a puppy mill is a commercial dog breeding operation, where the breeder puts profit over welfare of the parent dog. Puppy mills, dogs live in small cages with wire bottom flooring and are bred repeatedly. These dogs rarely have ever received vet care or proper nutrition you or I would provide our dogs. In 2019 alone, Wisconsin pet stores imported almost 2,000 puppies from out-of-state puppy mills, many of whom house hundreds of adult breeding dogs and have violations. One of the Wisconsin Petland locations purchased hundreds of puppies from the Indiana broker who was at the root of the Campbell-Bacter outbreak. But not only will implementing this ordinance stop the puppy mill and pet store pipeline, but it'll also protect Whitewater consumers. Besides sourcing dogs from inhumane mills, uh, pet stores also offer financing for their puppies. I was recently in a Wisconsin pet store holding a Cabo Pupi that had a price tag of $3,200. When I was told the price, I was legitimately shocked, uh, the pet store owner immediately saw my eyes widen and grabbed me information on financing or applying for an in-store credit card. I sneaking to remember that pet stores are charging upwards of 188% interest on these loans and credit cards. Consumers generally aren't aware of the conditions of the puppy mills that we're running. Because dogs at puppy mills do not receive ideal levels of socialization or veterinary care, unsuspecting consumers often obtain puppy mill puppies and then face an array of veterinary or behavioral problems on top of that initial high sticker price. These problems can be a financial or emotional burden for the dog's family. I have personal experience of this hardship, with this hardship when I adopted my dog Lambschow. She came from a puppy mill in northern Wisconsin, when she was rescued, all her teeth had to be removed, she had extensive ear surgery due to polyps forming from untreated ear infections, she had a mammary, she had mammary tumors and suffered a skin condition. She had little to no veterinary care in almost seven years of living in a mill. Since I've adopted her, I've been battling behavioral issues, and unfortunately, she's needed even further surgeries, including stereotactic radiation to treat reoccurring tumors. I asked my vet if these reoccurring tumors were something common with her breed, and I was informed it's not common and was due to genetic issues. So I cannot imagine the financial hardship that the owners of her puppies are potentially facing if this genetic problem was passed on. So passing this ordinance will not only send a message that Whitewater doesn't support this cruel industry, but it will also protect its residents and college student populations from predatory lending and the financial and emotional hardships that come with purchasing a pet store puppy. I would like to say thank you for taking the time to consider this ordinance and to reject any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the chat asking, make a comment, however, there might be somebody I realize was on the phone wishing to do so, is there anyone else from the public wishing to comment? If not, we'll close the public comment with thanks for all those who brought the amendment to us. Is there someone wishing to say? Coming back then to council comments, who wishes to say something?
I do, Lynn, this is Carol McCormick.
Go ahead.
As most of my colleagues know, I just recently adopted a purebred puppy, but I have done the research, I was on line many, many times with different breeders, they met with me, this is the second time I've adopted a puppy that's purebred, but you go through a vetting process to make sure that you are the right person for that dog, and, uh, she's been wonderful, and I think that's the way to go. You really have to do your research on whatever type of dog you want, so.
Thank you. Patrick?
I just wanted to clarify, so the amendment that we're on right now is adding rabbits to the list of prohibited, is there anybody that can maybe speak to that as an issue, and if, if there's anything that would be complicating if, if we were to adopt that amendment to this ordinance?
My impression was that it's something that oftentimes happens around Easter time, when, uh, that seems like the cute thing to do, and then people don't realize the implications of caring for one for a long, long time, but, um, if there's nobody on council with information on that, if there's anybody from the public who wishes to jump back in to respond to that, that would be fine.
I, I can, um, Megan Nicholson from, okay. Um, rabbits are definitely an issue, and it is, again, you, you nailed it on the head there with, with Easter. Um, I know a lot of our humane societies are, um, full of rabbits, especially around the springtime, it's, it's hard to resist a cute little bunny, um, and it, it is an issue, and there are, there are quite a few of these ordinances that do, uh, contain rabbits as well in, in the language. So, we as HSUs are not opposed to that, um, I, I, I don't think people realize how long a rabbit can live, up to ten years, uh, they, they actually do need exercise and being in a, a kennel, no matter, some can be potty trained, I'm, I'm told, and I'm sure that is possible, but it's probably a bit harder to do than a, a cat or a dog. Um, so, so if you need more information on that, I, I could provide it, um, but, but we wouldn't be opposed to that, um, if that was added, although this was really, um, going out of the puppies and puppy mills and cat mills, which are quite prevalent in the nation.
All right, are we ready to deal with the amendment? Matthew, would you like to state what your amendment is at this point?
So, uh, like Patrick said, I'm just adding rabbits to the dogs and cats, just to have that little bit of a broader scope on there.
All right, and who was the second on that, are you okay with it, was it Jim?
Yes.
You're okay with going with rabbits?
Yes.
All right. Is there any discussion on the amendment? That amendment would be to add rabbits as a prohibited animal to be sold. If there's no discussion, Michelle, let's have a roll call on the amendment, please.
Brown? Hi. Benny?
I'm.
Palmer?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
Ellen?
Hi.
Shogit?
Hi.
McCormick?
Hi.
That amendment passes, then we're back to the main motion, are there further comments or questions on the main motion? Patrick, are you raising your hand?
No, I'm just sitting on with my pad.
Anyone else? The comments that I had were very minimal, uh, and I think can be dealt with, uh, in terms of talking with Brianne and Wally before the second reading. Uh, one was, to me, the definition of pet store was very awkward, in that it's, it's defining a pet store as being a retail establishment where dogs or cats are sold, and, um, at least before we made the amendment, that would prohibit us from having pet stores at all in the city if we passed the motion. Uh, looking at some other municipalities' ordinances, they oftentimes said something like a retail establishment where companion animals were sold, or something like that. Uh, the one other thing that I noted on some other ordinances, under the restrictions on the sale of animals, where they talk about allowing an animal rescue organization to offer space for, uh, or, or for the pet store to offer space for, uh, rescue organizations, uh, to showcase adoptable dogs or cats. One footnote to come and put on there was to not allow those animals to be kept overnight in a pet store. So, again, I'd be happy to work with Brianne and Wally in considering that as we bring it back, back on reading. Any comments on it?
Lynn, it's Jim Allen.
Yes.
So we're not limiting true value when selling chickens tonight?
I do not believe so, because chickens were not referenced in the amendment.
Right, good, all right, that's all. Good to go.
Hearing no further comments then, roll call on the main motion, please, Michelle, this would be then to prohibit the sale of dogs, cats, or rabbits in Gundy City.
McCormick?
Hi.
Brown?
Hi.
Benny?
I'm.
Palmer?
Hi.
Singer?
Hi.
Allen?
Hi.
Shogit?
Hi.
The motion passes, that is only our first reading for, uh, members of the public who, uh, participated tonight, clarification that our ordinance, um, process requires us to go through two readings, so this ordinance would be coming back at our next meeting for a second reading and potential ultimate, uh, enactment of the ordinance. Meanwhile, thank you for everyone, uh, to everyone for your participation, it's, uh, not always the case that all of our public comment is in one accord on an ordinance, but that certainly makes it easier for us to make a decision when everybody's in agreement. So we certainly thank you for your comments tonight.